Welcome to everyone to one of the Planning Commission's most important missions in the city, which is to get the CIP right before we send it to the City Council. We've been working with Cindy even before the CIP has been submitted, planning and trying to figure out the best way to get input from as many citizens as possible. And this is a good turnout for such a nice day. I know you could all be working in your garden. So, welcome and thank you for coming. I'd like to recognize some of the city officials here today, of course, our Mayor Dave Tarter and our Vice Mayor David Snyder, Karen Oliver, Phil Duncan, Mary Beth Conley. I think that's it. Have I missed anybody on the City Council? Good. And we have some Planning Commissioners here today to help us out with getting conversation going at some of the tables, Lindy Hockenberry and Melissa Teetz and Quavo DeJean. And I think that's it. And of course, we have our wonderful staff here. Everybody's going to be lobbied for their pet project. I'd like to thank Cindy particularly because she's put an incredible amount of effort into not only getting the CIP presentation ready for the Planning Commission, but putting all of this together, the community meeting and getting us all the background information. So if, I think the Mayor would like to say a few words, and at least I hope you will say a few words.
I'll try. Thank you. Thanks very much, Ruth, and thank you Cindy, both of you all, and also staff. We've got a great turnout. It looks like a really exciting day with a lot of information for everyone. But on behalf of City Council, I'd like to also welcome you all here and thank you for coming out. It's always challenging. Budgets and CIPs, there's so many competing interests. And so, we really, as a City Council, wanted to get as much input as we can so you can help us prioritize. You know, there are limited resources, and frankly, we can't do everything. We certainly can't do everything now. And so, having your input on what are the priorities of the community is very important for us. And we wanted to have more openness, transparency in the process. And so, we're delighted that you all came out today and look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, a couple logistical points before I start this morning's PowerPoint. And the PowerPoint will just be to provide some background and get us all grounded on the same sort of information that we can explore today. Every table and seat should have a packet that has the agenda on the top. Behind that, you will find a community comment form. And I would ask each of you to have one of those with you today. And as you go through the display stations and learn about the projects, and then have the comment and question period at the end to think about this, and then to fill it out and leave it before you leave today. You could either leave it on the table or the sign-in table. And what this will give you is a virtual $100 bill. There are some graphics of the city's new money off our money trees for Tree City USA. And you can spend that $100 any way you want. It needs to add up to 100, or you don't spend it all, but don't go over 100. And you can put it on one project's the most important for you, or you can spread it out in increments of 10, 1, 15, whatever you want. There's pre-populated projects that represent within the CIP now, but there's also four white columns that are labeled "your choice." So if there's a project that you haven't heard about, something that's really important that's not on this list and you want to put it there, write it in and then put $10, $20, or whatever your preference is. There's a space for comments, and of course, you're welcome to fill out the blank back. And a space for optional name and contact information if you want to leave it, especially if you write a lot of comments, and I have trouble translating handwriting, I wouldn't mind being able to follow up, but that is optional. You also have as a resource, an excerpt from the CIP that just summarizes all the projects as presented to the Planning Commission. And then, the CIP FAQs, because a lot of times, we use terminology that isn't in our general day-to-day language, so that's there for you as a resource. All of this material is on the website as well. Also on the table is a copy of the PowerPoint from today, so you're welcome to follow along or take that with you as you desire. So the plan is, right now, to do a brief overview. Then we're going to go into the open house portion, which will give you time to stop by the seven stations that you want to drill in with staff to ask more questions about what's included, what's not included, is it pay-as-you-go, is it debt financing, is it cash, is it grants? And I'm going to ask for tables 1, 2, 3, and 4, kind of start at this half of the seven stations, and then the back tables there. There's about five minutes per station if you want to pace yourself to cover all seven, but if you really want to drill into one area, you can use your time however you desire. But I'm allowing for about five minutes per station if you want to do all seven. Then we're going to come back to the chairs, and that's when we're going to do some good Q&amp;A and comment periods. So on front of the podium, it's just some general questions to think about as you're going around all these stations. As the Mayor said, we can't do everything, but we have a lot of desires and needs. So, everything's important, but what's most important to you? And if you had to prioritize, what might be the least? And then, what comments and questions do you have for staff? And so that we can capture that information. And I'll have two note takers to assist me to recall your comments, as well as the video that we're doing by FCC TV today. So, just keep this comment form in front of you. And as you wander the open house displays or the comment period, think about how you'd spend your $100. And it will help us get a sense of how you are prioritizing projects.
Cindy, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
When I look at this grid, there are some things here that it looks to me like we have to do, like the sewer and stormwater, line repair and regulation compliance. I don't see that we have any options in terms of doing that or not doing it. So that's not really something that I would put on a kind of wish list. And same thing with the facilities. I mean, we have to repair the schools and the general government facilities and keep them maintained. So, just can you kind of frame this so we know how to make, a little bit more how we know how to make choices?
Yep. That is the challenge of the CIP and the budgeting process. So, for example, there is on stormwater and utilities, some regulations we have to do, but you can just do the minimum. We don't have to go above and beyond. And you can do it over 10 years instead of immediate. The same for facilities. There's no mandate from the federal or the state government that says we're going to maintain our facilities.
You're breaking roots.
However, there are some things that are pretty critical, and so I'm asking you all to decide what's most critical to you. If it's facilities, spread your money there. If it's deteriorating parks and the trails, put your money there. I mean, we've had challenges with economic downturn. We haven't been investing in our infrastructure in a while, and we're trying to get back there. So they're all pretty important, and you're going to have to make your choices. You know, we've got public safety, firearm training facility. Well, yes, the police need to be trained, but is, at what level of service does that firearm training facility need to be? So, this isn't the perfect tool. It's just a way to get your perspective and your input. Because all of this ultimately needs to meet Council's vision. And that is in the synopsis, what's on the screen right there for you. We have a lot of desired state. We know by Council's adoption where we want the city to be in 2025. How we get there, in terms of which projects, the timing, the cost, how much? Are we just doing the bare bones, basic, or do we want a higher level of service? That's the deliberative process that results in the CIP. We're not doing the CIP for the sake of doing the CIP, or the operating budget for the sake of doing the operating budget, is to achieve the vision as to what we want our City of Falls Church to be. Thus, I'll cover that piece. So, as the Chair Rogers indicated, we've done a lot more, as did the Mayor, to increase transparency and community engagement. As part of that, the website has a lot of enhancements. We do have them on some of the laptops, so you can see it. But if you go to fallschurch.vaa.gov/cip, you will get every presentation, every video, every FAQ. The full CIP is now posted there by section. So if you wanted to go to the section on transportation, you can just open up that section, for example. We're, of course, doing today's Town Hall meeting. The Planning Commission will have four work sessions and three public hearings, all heading towards February 23rd, which will be the final public hearing and adoption of their recommendation to forward to City Council, which will then be incorporated into Mr. Shields' FY16 operating and five-year CIP proposal to Council in March, and Council scheduled to adopt the final CIP on April 27th. We have also done, in addition to today's Town Hall meeting, in the comment forms that I hope you'll fill out and leave behind, we did an online survey for the first time for the CIP. We had a great response. 875 surveys came in. About 320 of those had open comments, so I'm still sorting through those. But you can see a little bit of the level of participation. And once we complete that survey and present it to the Planning Commission, that also will be posted to the website. The goals for the CIP are reinvesting into our community infrastructure, doing so in a way that maintains financial sustainability and strength and complies with a Council-adopted policies, and in the long term, comes up a way to have sustainable dedicated funding for our infrastructure. By charter, it needs to be consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and policies. And that's a sample of those there. And Council also in January adopted a budget guidance. The proposed CIP is consistent with the budget guidance. We have a lot of challenges that we'll talk about today, but we do have some accomplishments. We have started to really make some headways into completing some projects. Some of those we'll have as videos for you at the stations. But you can see, we finally have the Broad and Penn traffic signal installed. We've made some headways on some closed-loop and fiber things, that infrastructure between our facilities. The Thackeray preschool is open with children in it. And we've made some improvements at Mary Ellen Henderson, Community Center, and our tennis courts and basketball. And we have quite a few underway. We have a very ambitious CIP that's already adopted, and one that's proposed for deliberation right now before the Planning Commission. So you can see, besides the ones that's completed and the ones that proposed, staff is actively involved in South Washington transit and streetscape improvements. And that would go from Annandale to Tanner Hill on South Washington, looking at safety improvements on Roosevelt and Roosevelt, some daylighting of branches. And we have a video here that Mike can show you about what we're doing at Cove Branch and Pearson. Many of you have seen the Great Falls stormwater improvements right here behind the Community Center, where the tennis courts totally dug up while we do some retention. Mike can also add to that. And then, of course, we're starting the work on Mount Daniel. West End Park has a construction fence around it, and we have the new police dispatch phone system underway. There are many challenges, but also, I believe strongly, opportunities before us with the CIP. But we'll have a busy month with the Planning Commission to work through them, and then an additional month and a half with Council to work through their final deliberations, which means we hope all of you will stay engaged with us as we do this work. It is ambitious. We have significant facility demands. It's already been highlighted today. We have a lot of transportation needs, a lot of grant, limited resources. So we have really tried to right-size and schedule this. So therefore, transportation projects and facilities aren't all happening at once. They're staggered. And to Mike's right, you can see some transportation layout where the projects are listed, but they're also, you can see how they're scheduled out. We need to stay within the financial policies. We need to have a plan that really looks for the long term, so that we're maintaining and reinvesting in our facilities. Whatever we fix now, we don't want to be in the same boat again 20 years from now. We're going to need to look at ongoing money. As you'll see, this CIP relies a lot on one-time money, which is also the same as last year. That's not long-term sustainable. This is a very busy chart. It's just to symbolize, and you can see it up close on the transportation, how we break out staff to really maximize limited resources to be efficient to deliver these projects. And this is mostly focused on the public works and the development services for the key implementation, because they have the core of them. But it also tackles, obviously, schools, Rexon Park, all of our staff. This is a visualization of where all the projects are throughout the city that are CIP. You can see a lot of facilities and a core focus on the commercial areas. This is a summary of just the dollar amounts that are allocated for each of these projects as a quick guide for you. And this document, this color-coded Excel spreadsheet will give you all the details. You can see $17 million being invested into stormwater and sewer infrastructure. And then, when you look at general, which includes school, that's general government and schools, and transportation, in total, you can see $144 million planned over a five-year period. A key piece of that is under public facilities, and you can see this 125. And that is, of course, the big question of how we'll be handling the high school and Mary Ellen Henderson. So without the high school, which we'll talk about a little bit more, and Tony Jones and Wyatt Shields are here and be at the station on school facilities and our boundary line adjustments, without the big high school in Mary Ellen Henderson, it's about a $40 million CIP. That's a visualization of the pie. And I want to highlight, this is the project costs, not how we're financing them. So yes, the high school is currently in there is $100 million, because that's how the school board adopted it, for project costs. We all know there's a lot of dialogue on how we might finance that with other revenues from economic development and so forth. But this is the project cost. That's for FY16. Then there's a pie for all five years consolidated into one. Once again, project costs, not financing. But we do look at a variety of different funding sources, so that it is not solely pay-as-you-go, which is local tax cash, or debt financing, which is like holding a mortgage on your house. This one's the general fund in schools. You'll see in this one, no grant. Most of our grant money's in transportation, but we have a lot in debt. We have a whole lot, almost $3 million, we're only going to do if we find a funding source. So this CIP is presented to let the Planning Commission, the community, know what are all the needs. But not everything is recommended for funding. If it's green, it's because we don't have a funding source. The school financing plan refers to that $100 million for the high school and $5 million for Mary Ellen Henderson. What's new this year is total water sale proceeds. Council did adopt a resolution to dedicate up to 15% of the water sale proceeds that's left after investing in the pension fund. So that's about $11.3 million total available for CIP, up to 15% for immediate needs. So the CIP does propose to use about $5 million of that $11.3. The remainder is available for out-years or large projects, if that's how the community and the Planning Commission ultimately recommends. Because what's before you is how staff has presented it to the Planning Commission. Transportation has, as I noted, a lot of grant money. But there is also a lot of stuff that will only happen if we find a funding source. A lot of that money is grants available, but they have a match requirement. And if you don't have the match, you can't go after the grant money. So also on the chart under transportation, that's further described if you want to know more about those grant dollars. As we look at the financial policies, we have to look at how the CIP impacts our debt policies and how much debt we can carry, and also the fund balance. So this chart shows you existing debt that we're carrying right now, what the CIP would be to increase that debt, still under policy, which is green. That's without financing $104 million for high school and Mary Ellen Henderson. If we were to finance all of that, this chart simply shows you it's not affordable within our policy for policy compliance or for taxpayers' affordability, which reinforces the importance of coming up with additional funding, financing plan. This chart that you have will show you how our current debt is, and each facility that adds on, this big, large chunk up on top is $104 million. This red line is the policy. So we quickly get over policy unless we come up with some financing plans. Just a different visualization. The CIP is presented to the Planning Commission, stays within policy. The policy is at this pink, 17%, and the green is the proposed CIP. So you'll see it's in policy compliance. So we have brought down the fund balance to the 17% as required by Council's policy. That leaves about two months of expenditure, level of funding in the fund balance to cover two months of expenditures. That's all of the facilities that the city maintains. A lot of times, people think of the Community Center, the library, City Hall, and four schools. And we actually have over 24 facilities. In this PowerPoint, you'll have some history on all of those facilities, about reinvestment and what's funded and not funded in this proposed CIP. And the highlight here, and this is the reinvestment in all of the facilities, roof, HVAC, that except for FY17, there's no money for reinvestment into general government facilities. For City Hall, there is the task force recommendation to add an additional $5 million debt to fully renovate and expand City Hall properly. And James will be down by that display and also a video for more information on that. There is $8.4 million in the proposed CIP for the library expansion and renovation. And I know Mary will be down there with those. And I saw at least one library board member, I believe, several. So we'll have those here to help answer questions. And they just had a community meeting on Thursday night regarding that project as well. Some details there on the library. We have public safety, and Chief Gavin is here to talk about the firearms range. And she and Mike Collins can talk about the Fire Station 6, which is now being managed under our inter-jurisdictional agreement with Arlington. But that facility also has a lot of needs. For school facilities, the school board has adopted their 10-year master plan and did adopt the CIP, which this incorporates fully. And we have Tony Jones and Tom Horn here that can be able to talk about school facilities. And then we'll also use Tom and Amy on parks, fields, and terrfs. But you can see here the information that's been asked for, for TJ's HVAC, the high school, Mary Ellen Henderson. And facility modernization is a reinvestment fund that the school uses for HVAC roofs, elevators, similar to the general government. School board asked for $400,290 proposed. Both for general government and schools, the ask was reduced because there was insufficient cash available to fund it. And these are projects that are major, but not significantly in terms of being eligible for debt finance. So we needed cash. We, of course, have the Joint Campus Steering Committee. That is made up of Council members and school board that have been working with staff to proceed on how to use the new boundary adjustment that came in. And so we have the large map here, some information on that. And Tony and Wyatt will be available to answer questions. I did put the website there, so if you want to go and see the full plans, meeting summary minutes, et cetera, it's available. Transportation, as I mentioned, a lot of unallocated and unexcessed grants. We do have a lot of projects. New to this year, CIP is $600,000 for downtown reinvestment. That's using water sale proceeds and is neighborhood traffic calming. Neighborhood traffic calming is in for one year. The CACT has asked for $200,000 for all five years. There was only sufficient funding for one year. The WNOD improvements is also a CACT request. It's noted in here, but it's in the green, which means it will only be funded if a funding source is identified, which usually means something isn't done in order to shift the money over. Expenses elsewhere have to be reduced or tax dollars increased. Recreation and parks, we do have the Rexon Parks Advisory Board recommendation. They had asked for a significant amount of master plan funding, but you'll see that three years of their ask is not in the CIP, because we didn't have cash available to fund. So we do have FY16 using some water sale proceeds. And then, in the out-years, the last year of the CIP, they want to redo the entire trail system and all the parks, because they have totally just crumbling tree roots, you know, and sitting in water flooding. But other than that, the three in-between years, there's no funding. Howard E. Herman final phase is in the CIP, and additional open space funding is not. They have the existing $1 million, but not an ongoing replenishment. Two key things that are also under the parks, fields, and turf area is the synthetic turf and the track that goes around the football field. And so you'll see a summary of it here, and then to Tom Horn's right, some more information on that. In the recommended CIP is 450 for the field in FY16, and that would be water sale proceeds. And then, 222 for the track, so it could be done concurrently due to immediate needs. The request is to do it now. It is water sale proceeds, because we need cash. We don't know what might happen up there 10 years out. So it's not debt financed in terms of eligible. So with all of the projects that I just labeled as water sale proceeds, that's using the council designated up to 15% or 1.7% towards immediate needs. The rest would be of that $5 million put towards a parking garage at 313 Park Avenue, which is a transportation project, but it has some connection to the library, because it would provide some parking to address the shortage of parking at the library, because it's between the 313 medical building and the library, using the existing parking. But it would be public parking with library use, not just library parking. And with that, that's the presentation. There's some extra slides in there for some additional policy background, if you needed it as a reference. And what I'd like to propose now is that we spend some of that time to actually go talk about the projects, learn about them, get your individual questions answered, hear what your fellow citizen might be asking about. And then we'll come back together for questions on the presentation, questions on the projects, questions on financing. was great. What we're going to do now is spend about 35 minutes getting your all's reactions to what you've seen, heard, conversation, discussion. Anything's fair game, but if you could kind of focus on what was most important, least important, questions and comments, because we can't do it all, even though we'd love to. And as we do that, James and Paul are going to try to capture a lot of those keynote points for me. And staff resources are slowly moving up this way, so that we can, if there's a question I can't answer, I can call on somebody. As I mentioned at the beginning, we're recording this, so we need to make sure when you have a question or comment, if you please raise your hand, so we can get one of the three mics to you, so that it's recorded. And with that, I've got about quarter of three, so let's go to 3:15, and we'll check in and see how the questions are going, and whether we'll close or go for a little bit longer. So with that, who would like to start us off? Mike?
How will the priorities be set and who sets them?
Well, initially, it's under the Planning Commission to set the priorities right now between now and February 23rd. That will be their recommendation to Council. And then, the city manager will forward that to the Council. And Council and the community will deliberate, and Council makes the final funding decisions, which basically results in prioritization. And that's April 27. in prioritization, and that's April 27th. Chair Rogers, do you want to add anything to the prioritization process in your thinking? Or any of the Planning Commission members?
No, I'm just hoping that we can stay within our timeframe. There's an, as you can see from, as you can see from the materials that you've been looking at, there's a tremendous amount of paper to go through. And we're, seems to me, we're meeting around the clock, but we're not. I mean, we're, but we are doing a lot more meeting than we were. And what we need from you all is the information of what your priorities are so we can meet our timeline. And that's key, not only in this meeting, but when you talk with your neighbors. We're all easily accessible and available to listen to your concerns, so that's, that's what I want to take away from this and what my priority is and how we intend to proceed. Once, once we have a sense of what the public wants, then we'll be able to proceed, but we can't really do it until we know that.
So I just put back the slide that has the website pages to get all of the information in detail, but also my email address, which is on the handout PowerPoint. So feel free to email me, and I'll make sure everything gets consolidated for the Planning Commission. Also on the website is all of the budget calendar meetings through April 27th, but it lists all the Planning Commission meetings because this upcoming Monday will be the next public hearing and work session and pretty much every Monday thereafter. Other comments, questions, reactions?
Well, from my perspective, things that keep people safe should be the highest priority. Whether that's public safety, whether it's a sewer, our drinking water, you know, the transportation issues that keep you from getting run over while you're crossing the street, those are the things that I feel are the highest priority. And then, then we have to prioritize the others, and I don't know that I have any suggestions on how to do that. But things that lead to what I consider public safety should be the highest thing on the totem pole.
Thank you, Gary.
I really like this city council vision, which is slide number two. And, and I think it would have helped me a little bit, or maybe it would help some of us in the future who don't have engineering degrees and finance degrees and are just starting to read into this as laypeople, if these projects could be mapped to how they contribute to the vision. I mean, in some cases, it's a one-to-one mapping, and in other cases, it's a little bit more intangible and harder to follow.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Cindy, can I ask a question while you're scribbling there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk to Tom Horn about the cushioning pellets on the turf field. The PowerPoint says, you know, the General Assembly is legislation pending. You know, we've talked to Delegate Simon about that, but even if the General Assembly doesn't act on that, are we exploring alternatives and going to get cost estimates about options for pelletizing the turf field with something other than the recycled rubber that there's some questions about?
Mr. Duncan, I, I can, I can share with you, we've already secured cost estimates for non-tire rubber. As a general, and I don't have the specific number, you're talking about $1.20 or so per square foot for a different type of rubber, although still rubber. The project is about 100,000 square feet roughly, so you can do the math there. And then for an organic cork infill product, it's about $220 per square foot more. So again, you can do the math, that about $220,000 increased cost for a different infill.
So basically, we're talking 100 to 200 grand more if we went with one of those two options?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And the current CIP project cost is not based on alternative pellets, so it would be in addition to the $450,000.
I'm here to advocate for the library. I feel that the library is one facility. The schools are great, but us older folks could also use the library, and the whole community can use the library. It's badly a deed of attention, and I would like to say that be a higher than a lower priority.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if there are other, what was, what was considered when you looked at options for expanding spaces, lots of places like schools and libraries and all the extra space. Have you also looked at renting? Is, would that be a medium-term option? Because we seem to have an awful lot of empty office space in different, you know, around town.
We have on and off in different cases have looked at that. In fact, at one point, general government did have staff in leased space off-site. The school board is still currently leasing off, leasing space, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent for the school side in a moment. The challenge with that is it is usually a medium solution. You start losing efficiencies because you have to break off an office, and you have to be able to put someplace else that doesn't need a lot of public traffic, or otherwise we tend to make citizens go to two places to conduct one piece of business. It also increases the operating cost, so while you may not have the capital cost, you got to pay the rent and lease, which is an ongoing cost that has to be absorbed into the budget. So it's usually not in a one-for-one savings. There's a cost implication to it. So we have looked at that in the past. On the general government side, we actually worked really hard to bring all our staff in from off-site rentals because we have buildings that we own, and so then you're not paying that ongoing lease. So we've done that recently. Anything you want to add for the school board's side in your long-term vision?
The schools we do rent in the Flower Building above the post office. And just to get, you know, put it in perspective, when you do rent property, and for us, it's just over 11,000 square feet, you spend about $1 million every four years. I mean, that, it's expensive to rent land. So as we get ready to expand and look at the GM MEH campus, it would be ideal for us to be able to look at moving our central office so that we are no longer paying rent, and that then could help pay debt service. But there's still a lot of planning to take place to get us there.
It's a good question because it is that pros and cons and those cost-benefit analysis that we need to take into consideration.
I have a mic already, yeah. During the decision-making process between now and the end of April, with respect to the library, how will the Mason Row option be folded in along with what's presented here today?
Mr. Shields, would you like to take that one?
I'm Wyatt Shields, city manager. The, the library board has been working with the city council just to explore all of the options for the library. And so one of the things that has been under discussion is, could a private entity build a library for us, and could they do so in a way that's cost-competitive? And so Mason Row has responded to the request for information on that, and we're still evaluating it. But I think that, that's just part of good due diligence to make sure we've explored all the options before a final decision is made.
Now, that timeline will go longer than the adoption of this CIP, most likely. Definitely the Planning Commission's timeline. Mary, do you or any of the board members want to comment on the survey data and people's interest in the library staying put while you look at all options?
We will look at, oh, sorry. We will look at all options. However, I will tell you that we did a lot of public outreach when we were doing the surveys and the study in preparation for what we have currently are proposing. And I would say that the public was pretty strong about retaining the current property and using it as a library for a variety of reasons. Walkability, part of it was, it is a great place for citizens to gather, which they do on a regular basis. They meet each other there. They are able to, it's one-stop shopping. Everything is there in one location. But we certainly will look at Mason Row. We just received a rendering of it last Thursday and really don't have any information as to the cost, the exact location of it in Mason Row, or any, any other details, really. So we're waiting to hear about that.
These are obviously very ambitious plans, and some of the things that the city needs to do, it absolutely has to do, like the stormwater programs. But one of my concerns is, you know, in 2009, the city lost 10% of its staff, and how are the staff going to support these dramatic programs, these hugely expanded programs?
Excellent question, because it does take resources to pull this off. The city does contract with a lot of engineering firms, construction and so forth. We still need to manage it. On the CIP side, for the general government, we have been using the grant funds, particularly in transportation, and have brought three staff on in the last two years to manage projects, and they're totally funded by CIP projects. So they were additional staff without impacting the operating budget. And those are focused on transportation and facilities, predominantly in some stormwater. And that's what the pie charts over there reflect. Now, as you, and generally, the general government manages its general government CIP, and generally, the schools manage their school CIP, so I'm going to turn to the superintendent in a moment. But there's always an overlap. For example, with every new school, like Thackeray Preschool, then city staff are involved because the building official, the stormwater, the ENS control, erosion and sediment control all require city staff to manage it. So it's a very important coordination effort, and that's why we also have to stagger some of these projects. You can't do them all in the same fiscal year besides the funding realities. Anything to add in terms of your management structure?
Yeah, but we work with Fairfax County as well.
Yes. And the superintendent noticed she does also work with Fairfax County because Mount Daniel is in Fairfax County, and previously so was Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason, and now, of course, they're in the city. It's a good question because it's, it's complex to manage all these capital projects while doing the rest of your service delivery.
I know this isn't with the CIP, but also along with that question goes all the inspections and everything that has to come out of the planning department, and the need for more people out there so that things can get completed. So the more projects you have, the more inspections, and that's also, you have to include residential and everything else that's going on. So it's very, very busy.
And so those kind of projects that Ms. Hockenberry is referring to would be all the residential construction, but also, of course, the Reserve at Tenner Hill and the Harris Teeter Rushmark Project, for example, and Northgate that just finished, and Hilton that just finished. So all of those are happening while concurrently we're reinvesting in our infrastructure. Yes, ma'am. And Amy's behind, Dr.
Just sort of a quick follow-up question. You mentioned the grant funding, and it made me think of the Safe Routes to School funding that we had, I think, last year. Just wondering how that's sort of wrapping into this upcoming budget, particularly some of the projects that were talked about for Northwest Street and some of the other projects.
Sure. So the city did previously have, I guess it still does have some Safe Routes to School funding. I'm sorry, who asked the question? I want to make sure I'm talking in the right direction. Thanks. So the city has Safe Routes to School funding. It had originally applied for projects at the Mary Ellen Henderson campus and along Northwest Street. The city hadn't applied for those kinds of projects in a number of years, and it turns out the money that was applied for is totally inadequate for the scale and scope of the project. Also, there was never a real strong sense of community consensus around a particular design. And so what's looked at, what's envisioned now in this draft CIP is that that Northwest Street project would be pushed out a number of years. One, to give staff an opportunity to look for more funding opportunities out there to complete the project. And two, to have more opportunity for dialogue with the community to figure out what's the real vision for that street.
Thank you. Now, we did finish the Safe Routes to School component that's up at Mary Ellen Henderson. That's the crosswalks, the raised crosswalks and the new ramps, which now allow students to walk to school. So that part of the project was done. And additionally, we have applied for and received grant funds for traffic signals. And so we have several traffic signals, Broad, Washington, and Northwest that we would be looking at that would improve some of the intersections.
One, one other thing to consider about the Safe Routes to School money particularly, but many other pots of money, is that type of funding that comes from the federal and specifically that program has a very high administrative overhead in terms of compliance and reporting and tracking that on those smaller projects becomes very inefficient for staff to spend. You end up spending a huge amount of staff time managing that money. So we have to be very cognizant as we look at grant funding opportunities, at what's the staff cost, and is it an efficient use of staff time and the grant funding?
And this project is actually a good example because we ended up switching Safe Routes to School money off of Mary Ellen Henderson because that project was under $100,000. And we switched that federal money to Northwest and put some local money there because we were spending more money on right-of-way and labor tracking than we were in putting in the curb cuts and the crosswalks. So we've done a lot of reprogramming that way, thinking about.
Thanks. As I was going around and taking a look at the various projects, and this is particularly for City Hall, for the library, and for George Mason, I think the city is in a bind here, and you understand what the bind is, I think, because you can patch things up. You know, you can put a new HVAC system into George Mason, and it's going to cost a fortune. You can do patches here and there. And I think it's important then, when we do renovations, that we do, do them right and fix things the way that they need to be fixed, as opposed to being tempted to spend less money and do smaller projects, you know, a couple of years, a couple, a year here, a couple of year, year there, and then not end up with getting what we want. And that was one of the reasons why I was really in favor of the proposed Mount Daniel renovation, because we could do, could have done a few steps each year, not ultimately gotten what we needed, and then ending up having an inadequate facility. So I think that people in the city just need to understand that it's not spending $5 million on the library or nothing. It's spending a certain amount of money, that's quite a bit of money, and not getting, not getting what we need. So I just think the citizens need to understand that you kind of get what you pay for, and we need to plan for the long term here.
Thank you for the perspective.
The thing right now is to replace that turf field at the high school, because after this coming football season, there's, there will be no sports next spring if we don't have that fixed. So there's lots of priorities, but that has to be number one. And I'm not saying that because I have three kids in school right now who use that field, or two next year. But the thing I was just going to say is, considering there's a lot of gray hair in this room, and some of it's mine, I think what's going to happen with all these plans, you're affecting the lives of people who aren't here now, and many of us will be long gone. So we have to ask ourselves, what are the things we have to do, and what are the things we'd like to do? But you're really leaving a legacy for something, for a city, that we don't even know what's going to look like in 15 or 20 years. And the danger I, I envision is that we become not, scale-wise, we'll never be as big as Tysons, but we don't want to be Tysons, a mini Tysons. We don't want to be a mini Ballston. If you want to go to Ballston, you can go to Ballston. Ballston has some great things to do there. So does Tysons. And Tysons will be better or worse, depending on your viewpoint, 10 years from now when it really is finished expanding. But do we want to be, do we want to remain different like we are now from those two when we're sandwiched in between them? Or do we want to just be a smaller version of that? And I don't like the idea, prospect of leaving this town whenever it is 10 or 15 years from now, when I do, to leave it and say, well, we're a mini Tysons. Because, you know, Tysons doesn't have that much green space, and they talk about it, but they're not going to have a Cherry Hill Park. And do we want to have every single building up and down Broad Street look the same? Not to mention the traffic. If we do a Mason Row, you want people to come in, right? Go to the theater, the movie theater, and whatever else is going to be in there. But, you know, the intersection of West and Broad is pretty trafficky on a 5:30 on a Friday night. What's it going to be like five or 10 years from now? And I don't have the answer for it, but it's something that should be on our brains, you know, in the front of our mind when we have these you know, in the front of our mind when we have these discussions. Thank you.
Very good point and perspective, and certainly the challenge that faces Planning Commission, Council, all the boards and commissions, citizens, as we look at, what do we change? What do we don't change? How do we change? How do we envision ourselves in 2025? Because if you stay stagnant, then we're not affording everything that we've just been talking about. So it is indeed a challenge. But as I noted earlier, I believe it's a good opportunity, but we all have to be engaged. Let me go to your first point on the turf, and I'll ask Mr. Horn for any additional details. But it is, I do want to make sure people are clear, that the synthetic turf field obviously is at George Mason High School, and it serves the school sports. But it also has high use with our recreation and parks, and a lot of our fields, too. So it is part of our actual partnership MOU, and so it would have a dramatic impact on usability and service delivery if it's not fixed so it's safe.
Yeah, and to capitalize on that thought, it is the only full-size rectangular athletic playing surface available full-time to the community of Falls Church. Prior to its installation, all of our youth programs and any adult programs that were connected with the city were forced, really at the mercy of other jurisdictions, to provide playing space for us. The addition of a synthetic turf field allowed youth programs and adult programs that operate within the city to exist on the school fields at a time when the school wasn't using its grass field. So we converted to synthetic, and it now becomes a community facility from essentially 6:30 PM on, on nights when the high school doesn't have events. It also becomes a community facility all summer, when the community's summer camp programs essentially take over that facility. So it's on the school project, it's on the school site. It is not necessarily a school project. And in fact, the Parks Advisory Board listed it as one of their priorities, because of how significant it would be if they lost the use of that field. And to explain what Mr. Haggy was saying, the field has passed its warranty stage. It's now at the point where we need to continually test it in order to ensure its ongoing safety. During the last testing period, it passed, for lack of a better word. But there were tests that indicated concern. That was a year ago. The next time we test it, there will be additional areas of concern. At some point, we will reach a red flag, and the field will be shut down, because we'd have to determine it to be unsafe. That was what Mr. Haggy was referring to, as what we can expect. And we should expect that a field at nine or 10 years old, as heavily used as ours is, will fail relatively soon, and within a calendar year, perhaps.
Thank you, Tom. Amy, anything to add for the Rexon Park usage of the field that we didn't touch on?
Mr. Horn got it all. Recreation and Parks uses it all summer long for our summer camps. Community uses it for things that are not specifically run by us, but are still community programs, like lacrosse. Our youth, like, football uses it, our youth soccer uses it. So losing that field would completely lose our youth sports programs.
Other comments, reactions? Gary, and then we'll come up to Lindy.
Is there another location where we could, just to put another field? Or is that the only place we have, where we can use a field?
Another place to put a regular field within the city? I believe that is probably it. I know we have looked at our partnership with Larry Graves Field, and under utilization of those softball fields, it might be a big enough piece of land. But none of the other schools, for example, have a space big enough for -- and the one nice thing with the synthetic one is because we did it all the way behind the end zones, there's actually little ones doing field work on the non-legal side. So I know we've looked at some of it. To the top of my head, nothing comes off, other than when we redevelop that and what opportunities we could have.
Oh, I just wanted Tom to clarify the timing, because Mr. Haggy was saying one more football season. I think it's going to be two more, being done after the 2016 football season.
If the project is included in the FY '16 budget, we anticipate construction beginning in November of '15.
Oh, okay.
Which would be one more football season.
Okay, thank you. And Gary, that is, that study about looking for another rectangular field has been the ongoing nemesis of the world. The Parks and Rec, and everybody have studied that, and looked, and looked, and looked, and it's difficult to get rectangular fields.
Quick question about what the plan is for when presumably it needs to be torn up for the new high school and moved to another location. What is the interim plan for where all those kids are going to play then?
Well, I would say at this point, we probably don't have a definitive answer for that, because we don't know where the redevelopment will be, the school will be where the football. But certainly, we would have to, just as you would do phasing, when you have to relocate students, we'd have to do phasing and a partnership to cover where they'd play, both for schools and community functions. A lot more to be determined, I think, before we could answer that question.
Should we be thinking out of the box, including rooftop facilities? Like if we do redo the parking structure behind Claire and Don's? That we might be able to get a rooftop field, tennis court, something like that? Any redevelopment project could potentially offer us more playing surfaces.
I would say that's very important, and we should. And I know with the new land up there, and what the planning director has been doing in the TAP stuff, a lot of that creativity is under, you know, parking garages and putting the field or a pool on top. And certainly, you could do that with looking at other redevelopments. It's just going back to the prioritization and what goes with the project. But I would definitely say that needs to be in our mindset, and is.
Sure. Gary, to get back to your question, the Parks chapter, which is going up to council for their action this coming Monday, it specifically takes on that challenge of where do you find additional rectangular field space? So it identifies the space at Larry Graves. It also identifies Madison Park as a place where you could potentially replace that grass with turf. And that would also get around the problem that the field floods regularly, is what I understand. It also calls out for, as development projects come in, look at the roofs of those things, or as a parking garage is put up, look at the roof of that. That's sort of land that's flat, and it's an opportunity to put a playing surface on it.
Thank you. That was a great segue for the chapter that's being updated on the comp plan that the Planning Commission just approved, and will be before council on Monday for public hearing and adoption, or deferral. But some action will happen on Monday. Staff is proposing adoption.
Just a big thank you for everybody coming out and giving us these great ideas. I did have one concern from the man in the back, who said, he was, after we leave here in 10 or 15 years. And I was just wondering, does that mean we're dying off, or we're leaving the city? And yeah, I think one of the things that we need to be thinking about is taking care of our senior citizens. So I hope you're not thinking of leaving the city. I mean, we can't stop you dying off, but we -- if we, you know, if we take care of our senior citizens, they'll want to stay for a long, long time. And I think that's something we have to be thinking of, too. But thank you all for coming, and we will take all of your comments into consideration as we go to our next several meetings.
Again, I totally concur with the chair. Thank you all very much for your time and input, and feel free to stay in touch. And summaries of this and the survey, once completed, will be posted also.